Welcome to Stoughton Media Access Cables Community Forum Show. My name is Steve Kelly and I'll be your host today. And today, we have the privilege of meeting some new town meeting representatives. And I have with me Adam Dawkins, who is the new moderator. And we're going to have a discussion just about what is it like to sort of be the new blood in the town? And maybe what are some of the issues that they want to bring forward? And why they did all of that? So I'd like to introduce you to Carmel Druze, who is a new town precinct meeting member. All right? And we have Steve KV and Glenn Tucker. And Adam. So thank you all for giving up your time to come in and kind of share new ideas. I'd like this to inspire people to come into the town, take a role in town government, and try to get the best results. So Carmel, ladies first, let's start with you. So what inspired you to take a chance at sort of jumping into town government?
Well, I was surprised at how easy it was to become a part of Town Meeting. So I moved to Stoughton about a year and a half ago. And the first time that I went and voted, there was this ballot and vote for maybe nine or 10 possible positions, and there were three or four people's names listed.
It seemed like they were all going to get in?
Yeah, so it seemed like this was something to get involved with. I'm not sure that I would have felt that same initiative to investigate it if it had been, you know, there's already a lot of people running and there's already a lot of people involved. So based on that, and seeming like there needed to be more people's names on the ballot and more people involved and elected into the representative positions, I did a little research, found out how to run, and got my name onto the ballot. It was a very, very simple campaign process, which was nice.
I'm going to come back to you and ask you what that process was. All right? But before we do, Steve, tell us a little bit about what generated your enthusiasm to make this kind of a move?
It was a kind of an interesting experience. I was speaking with a friend of mine, Dr. Rob Kramer. This was around the time that town was voting on the new school, budgeting the new school. And he and I had had kind of a spirited debate about it. We talked for quite a while. And at the end of it, he mentioned that he was part of Town Meeting. And, you know, as odd as it sounds, when he said that, I thought, I would love to do that. That's something I'd be really interested in doing, is getting involved in the town government. And after living here, having lived here for about nine years, eight or nine years, it dawned on me, I didn't really understand how our government operated very well. And so I, this was in the summertime, so I spent several months looking into it, getting to understand how our government operates. And what I found was that my precinct had a lot of openings, had quite a few openings.
What precinct is that?
Precinct one.
Precinct one, okay.
Yeah, so it was, you know, wide open, the opportunity was there. And so I decided to jump in, give it a try.
And do you have children, Steve?
I do, I have one son.
You have one son, so there's a little bit of a weight in that, isn't there? I mean, they're watching you, right?
Yeah.
You know, when you connect with town government and, you know, use that role, I think they see, they notice.
As he gets older, he's very young right now, but as he gets older, I really would love to see him get involved in this as early as possible. I think there's a lot of room for people of all ages to make an important contribution to our community.
What's his name?
Reed.
Reed, and how old is he?
Five.
Next year, he can join.
Junior town chairman.
Glenn, let's hear your story, please.
Yes, so I was invited to participate in Town Meeting mainly because of my wife. She was a rep and is good friends with Adam. And through various discussions and hearing things that were going on, participating in, or paying attention rather, to things like the vote for the school last year. And I was appalled that there were, you know, people who were really objecting to the new school. Other questions that had come up, I'm wondering like, well, why is that happening? And, you know, similar to Steve, just not really understanding how the town government worked. That, and then some things with a friend of ours was running for school committee as well. And then just said, you know, I have experience in other venues of parliamentary kinds of things. I said, you know, I should really get involved and do this myself because I have some experience with it, I enjoy it, and it's important, similar to what Steve was saying as well. Whenever we vote, we always go as a family because my wife and I are trying to--
This is a wild date night?
Yeah, well, kind of, yeah.
Let's go to a town meeting, honey.
Yes, yes. Well, it kind of like that, but we always, we would always go and take our girls with us whenever we would go vote because, you know, voting is important, participating is important, being informed about what is going on is important. It has direct effect on how we live today, right now, in our community. And part of our responsibility of being good citizens is participating in that. And so part of this was, I also have a personal motto, that if you're willing to complain but not willing to do anything about it, then, you know, please take a seat and be quiet. And, you know, some of the things that were happening, like I was, again, I was wondering, you know, why is that? What are they thinking? You know, what's the motives in the process?
So at least get into the fray, right?
So get into the process and participate. So that's how I got involved.
Very good, very good. So that brings us, Adam, this is your fresh start, right?
Yep.
How was your first Town Meeting?
It was, it was great. You know, I would, I would say it was an adventure, but it was a good adventure.
Yeah.
It was not a misadventure, at least, which is a good thing. I really, really enjoyed it, and I really enjoyed this role very much. It feels like a great fit for me personally. It is, it was, it was, it was great to be a part of such a wonderfully democratic process that not every part of the country gets to enjoy. And being not a native New Englander myself, I sort of instilled, frankly, a sense of envy in my relatives and friends down south where I come from, that we get to participate in something this significant. And that it's that accessible to the people of the town and of the community, that people can actually take, take hold of their community and their town's destiny in such a way that we can through Town Meeting. And so it's a tremendous privilege to be the custodian of that and to, and to sort of walk in the shoes of so many who have come before me in this role that have cared so deeply about it. So I'm really, really enjoying this so far.
Could you, I'll bet that your constituents as well as others would like to hear or be very interested in hearing, how do you feel like, what were your successes? And what are your things that you could learn to do better?
Yeah, well, you know, there's a, there are a lot of technicalities to this role. And being, in my first year, one of the things that struck me when I came into the role is that I don't know what I don't know, but I'm learning that very quickly. And I've been, I was very happy to work with a wonderful deputy town moderator in Jean Fleming and all of her many years of experience. And she, she has been a wonderful advisor and a great friend and a great partner in this venture. Also, I also give great thanks to my predecessor, Howard Hanson, who was, who was a great resource to me as I got ready for my first Town Meeting.
So he was gracious?
He was very gracious and a real gentleman, as Howard is. And I'm really grateful for that. But, you know, I've, it was, it was from Election Day on April 4th until Town Meeting gavelled in on May the 8th, was only a little more than a month. And so there was a, that was a very intense few weeks getting ready for this. I'd been getting ready in the, in the, in the event that I won the election, I was sort of preparing and getting ready. But after I, after I did win, it was a, it became a real sort of, you know, bonsai, here we go. It's, it's time to, time to really get serious about getting ready and getting prepared for this. So I went to several other regional Town Meetings or Town Meetings within our region and sat in on the ones that started before ours did. I did a lot of study, a lot of preparation, a lot of writing, a lot of scripting, and getting things ready to go. And met with a group of, of Town Meeting members, seasoned Town Meeting members, who were very interested in the direction of Town Meeting and how things were going to go. And really heard from them what it is they were looking for in order to smooth out this process and to begin to make it more, make it more, not only more enjoyable, but more efficient. And so, and I think we accomplished that. And since Town Meeting has concluded for this year, Annual Town Meeting has concluded for this year, I've met again with that group of advisors and had sort of a postmortem conversation, which was really, really helpful to me. And I think in general, we all feel that things went quite well this year. You know, if, if I'm reelected next year, then there'll be some finessing and things that we'll do differently and learn from what happened this year and do things better and differently next year. But that's the way things go. So I'm, I'm looking forward to that.
Let's talk about agenda now, so that, let's go back to Carmel, for instance. And I promised I would ask you, so tell, say, people that are out there that might want to follow in your footsteps, what's the process? Is it, you said it's fairly easy, so what is it?
It's fair, yes, it's fairly straightforward. And this is something that I'm particularly interested in this fall, is making sure that more people know what you need to do and how it happens.
You're at the limelight.
So here I have the whole camera.
Yes.
But also, I'm doing a lot of side conversations and mentioning it to people and, hey, this is what you do. So you go to--
You can actually look right in the camera and talk. Go ahead, you're talking right to everybody now.
I don't know the exact dates of deadlines and things like that, but the information is out there. So you go to Town Hall and you say, I want to pull papers to run for a town position. And I think that that's pretty straightforward, whether it's a Board of Selectmen position or school committee or any of the other ones. But you say, I want to be a Town Meeting rep for the precinct that you live in. And if you're not sure what precincts you live in, they can look it up, it's very nice.
At the clerk's office, right?
Yeah, the clerk's office is phenomenal. And then you have to gather signatures. And if you're running for a precinct rep, you have to get signatures from people in your precinct. If you're running townwide for one of the larger committees, you can get signatures from anyone in town.
So how many signatures?
I don't remember, not that, Adam?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Adam's got the process, this is all right, good.
But they say get more than that in case some of them, maybe somebody has moved and isn't actually still in that precinct anymore, whatever. So you just basically go to your neighbors, if you have kids in school--
If they like you.
Playground is a good place. Here's the thing, even if they don't like you, you say, we don't have enough representatives. So if you don't like me, then you should also run, and you think you'd do a better job.
You sound like you'd be perfect for this job of bringing new people in.
Great, here's how you do it.
You've got an angle for everybody.
So you turn, excuse me, you turn your papers in by deadline and you're fine. If you don't get enough signatures or you don't turn your papers in by deadline, you can run as a write-in. And there've been a couple of us, Adam specifically, and then I also helped to create a list of everyone who is running as a write-in so that could be distributed, so that when you go and you're like, that guy was going to run as a write-in, I don't remember his name, that you would have a list of the people in your precinct who were interested in running as write-ins. Who can remember all of those names and that information?
And their addresses.
And their addresses, yeah, to make sure it's the right person. So it's not, you don't have to do yard signs, you don't have to do, for Town Meeting rep, you don't have to--
There's plenty of--
Do a lot of those things, you can just mention it to people. And then, and then it also, I found it really helpful to badge your people and say, remember when you signed my paper? Well, now today's the day that you go vote. Go and vote for me.
Yes, very good.
And it did some people who I think may not have gone and voted or remembered to because I was saying, remember, I'm running for this and I want you to go vote for me? Well, when they go and vote, then obviously they're going to vote on the other things on the ballot as well, so.
Very nice.
Yeah.
Good, thank you for that.
Sure.
So tell us, like, if you could pick two issues that you feel strongly that you'd like to see movement on, what would they be?
Within the town?
Sure.
I'm still new, so I'm still getting a feel for how things are. I definitely would like to see our town feel a little more vibrant. I think there is a lot of activity within the town, there are new people coming into the town, but I think that there's sometimes a more, like a lower energy feeling. You don't see that vibrancy necessarily. And that's something definitely I noticed when I was new, when we were looking at homes and going through, it looked very quiet and like there wasn't a lot going on. So I'd like to see us foster ways to bring that energy and that vibrancy of the community and have that be more visible.
Share a new look. Yeah, and share a new look for the town. So that's great.
Yeah.
I think that's a good discussion point, perhaps pre-Town Meeting, Adam, pulling together some people and saying, you know, how might we energize? How might we do a better job letting people know what a great town it is? So that's, that's a good initial starting point for you.
And then I think also involvement.
Yeah, involvement.
Getting people involved in Town Meeting, getting people involved in committees, getting people knowing what's going on, that's something that I'd like to do.
I got a stuff, you'll take all the good stuff before I get to these guys.
Sorry, relax, I got it.
Some, couple of things that you feel very strongly about?
Sure, so for our town, there's, there's a couple of things that, you know, that I do care strongly about, and I know I'm not alone in this, I think it's very common, that, you know, when I think to myself about what brings somebody to a town, when they, when they first move here, what are they looking for? If they have children, the first question they're going to ask themselves is, are the schools good? And, and the second question will be, is it safe? And for people who don't have children, you probably move straight to the, is it safe, right? So, so those things are very important to me. We have, from my own experience, my own interactions with them, we have amazing educators in this town. We have a, an excellent police force, a really great group of guys, our, and women, and our, you know, fire department, equally excellent people. I've had, a couple of years ago, my son had croup, I don't know if anybody's ever seen this, happen at night. Scariest day of my life, honestly. It turns out, obviously, it's nothing, turns out to be nothing, it's just a scary, scary experience.
Tell us about it. Tell us a little bit, like, how did that day start?
Oh, yeah, so it happens at night, they just, you know, you're, my son started having difficulty breathing, he's gasping for air in the middle of the night, we kind of woke up to this horrible sound. And, you know, we immediately sort of--
And he's only two at this time?
He had two or three, I think, yeah. And we, you know, my wife and I scrambled, we called the police, the fire department, or the 911. And, you know, my wife started getting dressed, we kind of, we didn't know what was going on, and he's had problems with his airway in the past before, sort of, sort of like a pre-asthma thing. So we were terrified. And I think he might, I want to say he might have started to change colors a little bit, and it was just a terrifying experience.
Oh my goodness.
The fire department was there in no time with an ambulance, they took him, they took great care of him. And actually, somebody, they had the fire truck as well. And as they were, my wife threw herself into the, into the back of that ambulance and they took off. And I was going to follow behind them in a car, and one of the fire, one of the firemen who was there said, I think, you know, it was scary, but I think that was croup. And then he's like, I think things are going to be okay. I don't remember exactly what his words was, but he really put me at ease. And, you know, the speed, the compassion, you know, just really great guys.
So you'd like to foster sort of a--
Yeah, I really want to make sure they have the resources available. Nobody wants to see these three places want for anything, if possible.
Right.
I know that we have a fire department that's very old, right? And it's, I want to say built in the 1940s or something, 30s. And there's almost no clearance for the trucks, they're trying to get, it's like four inches of clearance for these trucks. I can't imagine trying to run a modern fire department out of, out of some of these old buildings. And how much extra sort of work and waste is involved with that? I want to see them get the resources they need for it as much as possible. Same with the police department and with our schools as well. It would just be so disappointing to see the talents that we have in this town go to waste because they don't have the resources they need.
Excellent. So sort of a force for development of our sort of public infrastructure?
Yeah, you know, the thing is that it, as excellent as these things are, they are expensive. And, and when we, when we look at a budget, for example, these areas rise to the top of people's concern because they are very expensive. They're expensive though, because they're, you know, it's just the nature, nature of the work. And unfortunately, it's one of those types of things, it's difficult to get around. I just, I really would like to be a sort of champion for, for those needs as much as possible. If, when you're trying to deal with budgets, there's, you know, what's coming in versus what's going out. And people are often very concerned about what's going out, what we're spending on it. There's the other side of the equation though, is what's coming in. Can we find ways of bringing in revenue so that we can have these, these nice things, these vital things for a modern town? And I'd like to get involved and try to find that. Where do we find the revenue to afford the things that we, we need?
So it sounds like an influence for good.
Hopefully.
Very nice. Glenn, step into this discussion.
Yeah, so the, the main, I have a couple of things that I'm very concerned about or that I think about a lot, and one is the school. I have two girls who are young, one is in school and one will be starting this fall. And plus, I'm a physician, so I've consumed a lot of education in my life. And so, so I'm, I'm concerned about that, and it's something that I always think about. And so when it's, when I hear things and I read things and, you know, read in the newspaper or hear on the streets, like, why did that happen? Is it true? You know, what's going on? At Town Meeting, you know, is the place where you get to learn what's in the budget, what's planned to happen, you know, what is supposed to happen, and get to see some of the people who are accountable for, for all of these things. And they're, they're all there, you can walk up and, and talk to them. You can always talk to them anytime, but Town Meeting is one of those times when, this is where everybody gets together to talk about what's the plan for next year in Stoughton. And so I think that, you know, it's an opportunity to engage directly with the people who are responsible for what's happening, you know, in a public way in, in our town. What both Carmel and Steve said, you know, about the, you know, wanting like a more vibrant feeling in the town, but we, you know, need, you know, good, you know, policing and fire departments and that, you know, good public services. One of the other things that comes up for me all the time is, because we, I live right by the high school, is I'm always going through downtown, it's like there's, there's so much potential here in, in Stoughton. If we can figure out how to encourage use of this space that will benefit everyone more so, there's, as we all know, there's the, people have been talking about like the theater, and there's, you know, other space downtown that doesn't seem to be used very effectively and that. And, you know, part of it is, you know, challenging because, you know, these were old, you know, cattle trails at, at one point that, you know, 100 years later got paved over. But that doesn't mean that it's impossible to make progress. And so I think that, you know, I'm very concerned about that. And again, want to see, I think that, you know, all of these things are all tied together. We need good schools, we need good policing, we need good firefighting, we need a good vibrant feeling in the, our town so that all of these, so that people want to be here, so that we're, you know, it's like everything goes together, it seems like. You can't have just, you know, one thing working well and ignore everything else and then you still don't get the, the whole goodnessome in the town. And so that's really what I, what I think of. I try to think of the whole thing at, at once, but schools is always first for me.
All right. So it's kind of a good segue, the idea about how the town center looks. And maybe you could, there's, as you, if you could step out of your role of sort of coordinator, moderator, right? And sort of taking the challenges that everyone else wants to see, what would, first of all, do you have a thought on the town center and a part of that? What is your sort of one thing or two things that you'd like to see really worked on?
Well, I think that, one of the, actually, the way that I got involved in, in Stoughton to begin with is, very shortly after I moved to Stoughton, I met up with John Stagnone and got involved with Friends of the State Theater, as in fact, I think we met at your office, the first time we all gathered. And I was at that meeting and answered an ad in the Penny Saver that he was looking for people to be involved. And in my professional life, I'm a nonprofit fundraiser, and so I got involved with that because it, I saw that and still see that as the opportunity of sort of the crown jewel of the, of the town center. Definitely an uphill battle, definitely a, a lot of work ahead, and, and a lot of things need to fall into place for such a thing. I still think it's an attainable goal, and I still think that it's a worthwhile project. So it was really the town center that drew me in initially, that, because I see that as such a, such a transformative possibility for the town. That if we have, if we have a center, a place that we all sort of call the sort of central nervous system of our town, that we can all be proud of, then I think that, I think that it's only going to mean great things for the town. And I'll just sort of, just tangentially for a moment, I'll just say that I just came this morning from the dedication or from the groundbreaking ceremony for the new high school. And I think that in the same way that the new high school is drumming up tremendous new energy and great feeling and positivity about the future of our town, I think, I think the town center could have a very similar effect for us. So I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing, to seeing some, some real sort of movement on that from the new Board of Selectmen as a result of the work of Town Meeting and from the result of all sorts of wonderful people who get involved with the town through efforts to revive and to refocus our town center.
So let me ask a general question that I don't know the answer for at all. How much power does a Town Meeting have? And I don't want to say quite compared to the Board of Selectmen, but as a directive, let's say that you four decide that the town center, and you agree with me because that's my number one right now, get this town center cleaned up. And I feel like honestly, it's like a blister. Now, you've all probably had a blister on your toes, and they get better. Do you know what I mean? They get better, you can run after a blister. But it's like a blister, we have to put the healing salve, we have to re-engineer that section. But my question is, even if you wanted that as a Town Meeting, how do you engineer that? How do you get, is it possible to get the Selectmen? Or do the Selectmen have full control and you don't have that influence? Do the town administrators have all the influence? What, and I say that as a frustrated member, four years of the planning, of the master plan committee. So I'm saying, hey, I put my best energy into that thing, and I, we have so far at least fallen short, we still have a blister. So what do you all think about that? I'll kind of go down the road.
Yeah. You know, one of the things that, that, that does not happen at Town Meeting is that we don't just sort of show up and voice brand new sort of ideas that, that are not already suggested in the warrant. So the things that, the things that we talk about at Town Meeting are the result of a year's worth of planning, and sometimes more than a year's worth of planning and discussion and vetting and conversation and all sorts of things. And we show up at Town Meeting to discuss the, to interrogate and to discuss and to better understand and finally to vote to approve or not approve the direction that, that some of the various groups that work on moving Stoughton forward are presenting to us as a town. And so the, the best way to affect change in Stoughton is not only to get involved in Town Meeting, but as a Town Meeting member, then to start to understand which commissions and which groups and which, which committees in town are working on the various projects that you care about. And I, I see that as part of the moderator's responsibility to demystify some of those things and to, and to help Town Meeting members and representatives understand and the community to understand where it is, where's the best place for me to take my ideas and my energy and my, and my passion in order to make Stoughton better? And where do I even get started? So I think that, I think that's a really important thing, that as people decide that they're, are looking to possibly join Town Meeting, which I hope everybody will, will consider joining Town Meeting.
Fill the ranks.
But, but, but that's not the place that we go and just sort of show up and sort of pour out all these wonderful ideas. Ideas are not necessarily born and decided on that particular year at Town Meeting. That, that's a long process to get to that point, to finally get approved by Town Meeting. So that is, so, but, but to answer your question, I think there's a tremendous amount of energy and passion in the town and a lot of ideas around, around the improvement of our center. I can't think of a single soul who doesn't want to see our town center improved and something that we can all, we can all point to and be proud of. I, I think that there are some wonderful people working on it. These things unfortunately don't happen overnight, they are the result of years' worth of planning and years' worth of, years of work and years of discussion and, and deciding on a direction. But I think we're getting there, I think progress is being made. It's just, you know, if you're like me, sometimes you start to run out of patience and you really want to see things changed overnight, but that's not the way these things work unfortunately. So, but I, I have faith that we will get there.
So Carmel, you're a relative newcomer.
Yep.
How do you see the balance of power that, that might create change?
Well, honestly, I'm still, like I said before, learning these things. So what Town Meeting did and the benefit of that was getting to sort of see all the players in one place.
Right.
In one auditorium. And by that, I mean the people who are in the government positions, people who are in elected positions, people who are on the town staff in various ways, and then hear the voices of people who got up to the microphones to voice concerns or ask questions. And you get a sense of not just what are my thoughts around how a town should go, but what are some of the other voices and ideas that are in town? So, I think it does require that knowledge and coordination of what's happening in the other pieces, right? So, we have the various elected positions, like the Board of Selectmen and School Committee, and then we have the people who are doing the work in the town, the town employees and planning boards, town manager, those kinds of folks. And then we have all the populace, we have the people who, who live here. So, to me, it does seem fairly well-balanced, and I, I wonder if occasionally that balance is actually what slows things down. I don't know.
Good question.
But it could be that...
Rather than a good answer, that's a good question.
Yeah.
Right?
That because it's well-balanced, you know, things get done quickly if you have a dictator, right? If there was one person making all the decisions, then things would get done very quickly, but they wouldn't necessarily represent the desires of the majority of the people. They would just be what that one person was able to get done. So, I don't necessarily know the answer to exactly how those things balance out, but it does seem, at least in that meeting, like there is a fair amount of balance and accountability that happens. And Town Meeting seems like a very nice kind of check on things. A lot of times, we were voting on things that had already been, you know, very well-thought-out. The finance committee had looked at them, the various folks who are directly impacted had looked at them and were able to present them. But then there is this check in balance, that there's a large group of people who are able to ask questions, get some more information, and then they're the final say on whether someone's idea or someone's plan is going to go forward.
Well, I'm going to ask you a question, but before I do, I want to kind of pose something for these guys. So, Carmel has got this great question going, is it possible that the balance of power is one of the things that's slowing down? So, you each owe me at least a good a question as that. Before I get to you, you've got to be thinking that. So, before I get to that, favorite thing in Stoughton? What's your favorite part of Stoughton? What is the thing that you love about Stoughton?
My favorite thing in Stoughton is that I live right near downtown. I live near Faxton Park, and until the library moved, I could walk to everything. Like, I could walk to the library, I could walk to restaurants downtown, I can walk my kids to school, I can walk to the train station.
So, walkability.
I can walk to the Y if I want to have like a workout before a workout. So, I know that that's not the same depending on where you live, but if you do live or, you know, if you park near the center, there's a lot that you can...
Jump on the train to Boston.
Access by foot and do all of those things, which I like. I appreciate the opportunity to get outside, I appreciate the opportunity to say hi to neighbors and, and those sorts of things, rather than feeling kind of trapped in a car all the time, seeing my driveway and then streets and then a parking lot.
Very nice. So, that's your favorite thing. Great. So, we'll go back. Steve, what's a good question about Stoughton? I mean, I thought that was a great, is it possible that the balance of power is what's sort of hindering? In my case, my thing that I want to see this center straightened out, I feel if you could do that, you'd create the energy that you were talking about seeing just a little bit more of. And once that center gets really clicked into gear, there'll be all kinds of projects going on. And it just seems like we're stuck with that, without getting out of it, even though we've had great ideas good forth about how to change it, but we can't seem to get there. But go ahead.
Before I do, I'd like to just echo something both Carmel and Adam mentioned, which is that, you know, as a first-year Town Meeting representative, there is a lot that we, you know, I don't know what I don't know. There's a lot of things I know that I don't know and I don't know what they are. And so, as much as I know there's things that I don't like in Stoughton, there's things I do like, I'm still kind of unraveling how, where all the connections are. How do we get to where we want to be? And one of the, one of the threads that I've sort of started to pull on is, as I mentioned before, is ultimately, these things have to be paid for. As much as everybody dislikes Town Center looking the way it is, does currently, there does appear that there's just things that are being prioritized ahead of it. And, and we only have so much money, and at some point, we just have to not, not put the money towards, towards Town Center because there are things that we all feel collectively.
So, it's your fault we're not getting to the other side. You!
Well, I think, once again, I think that if we, if, you know, the spending, we have a lot of eyes on how to, on how spending is, is done. It's the other side. It's how do we bring in the revenues? Like, we've, we can, there's not, we can't cut anything else. Like, our budgets are as efficient, almost as efficient as they're probably going to get. There's a little bit of room here and there. If we want to have nice things, we need to bring money in to pay for them. If we don't bring money in to pay for them, it may never happen.
Okay. Well said. All right, Glenn.
I don't have a question that's as good as Carmel's.
No.
It's a really good question. But I, I think that, you know, part of the reason that it is slow and things don't move at a rapid pace is because of things like this, but I think it should be that way. I mean, things that affect everybody need to be clearly vetted in a public way and is in as transparent a manner as it can possibly be. That's how we, that's how we end up with a town where people are proud to be from here, happy to be here, this is a great place, we want more of what we have instead of a negative kind of complaining that, I don't like this, I don't like that, this is wrong here, that sort of thing. At the same time, I think you, you mentioned like the balance of power, like in Town Meeting and the Board of Selectmen and so on. Like, for all the committees that Adam mentioned, I mean, there are Town Meeting reps who sit on all of those committees. All of these meetings are open, there's not, they don't really happen in executive session, although that, there are some times when that does happen. But in general, everything happens out in the open. It's difficult to know when and where and not knowing what you, what you don't know. But when it comes right down to it at the very end, it's a town meeting that says, yes, we're going to do that, or no, we're not. And the Board of Selectmen can love it, all the committees can love it, the town manager, you know, the heads of all the departments in town can love an idea, but if Town Meeting says, no, we don't like it, we're not going to do that, then it's not happening. You know, so it really is the, the people in the town who decide, this is the direction that our, our town needs to go in, this is what we want to see, this is the plan, this is what wants, this is what we want to happen. It's complicated and aggravating when it doesn't go as quickly as we all want, but, you know, if I was emperor of the world, things would be different. And, you know, it's probably a good thing that I'm not.
Favorite thing about Stoughton?
What I like the most about Stoughton for my girls is that there's a lot of different parks around and things are easy to get to, and it's very convenient for me to get to work, so.
Excellent. Steve, we didn't hear from your favorite thing about Stoughton.
It's definitely the people. You know, I came here for, because my wife is, she grew up here, and so I already knew a lot of the people in this area, all of her friends. And, you know, the more I spend with the time, the time in this community, the more people I meet who I just can't get enough of. Very smart people, it's very diverse. You know, I, the community is honestly the best one I've ever lived in, and I've moved around a lot, and I'm very happy with, with my neighbors.
Very nice.
Especially, I'd just like to put a little shout out, I live on Ewing Drive.
Yes.
And whenever the, whenever it snows, you know, from, especially badly, everyone's out helping everybody else shovel the driveways.
In that case, I'm going to bring my dump truck with some snow to Ewing Drive, all right?
Come on over. I've heard the same story.
I want to rain on that parade, I don't know.
I've heard the same story with other neighborhoods.
Yes.
People really care about each other, and they, they will, you know, put in the extra time, they'll shovel the neighbor's driveway out, they make sure that, you know, the lady down at the end of the, end of the road who, you know, her son's away and, you know, maybe she has a, you know, a bad knee, she's not going to get stuck there. They're going to go and make sure that, that she's taken care of. And I see that throughout this community, that people really care about each other.
That's a really nice thing to be able to say. It truly is.
Yeah.
Yeah, very nice. Adam, favorite thing about Stoughton?
Definitely the people. It was, it was almost immediately after I moved here some years ago that it just felt like home. And it was, it felt like home really when I was sort of determining whether I was going to move here. It was, it was, it was a place that reminded me so much of where I grew up in South Carolina. It, there was a sense of community here that I really sort of latched on to. And it's not only that there's a sense of community, but there's a sense of passion in this community, that they really care about not only their community, but about the world and about, about trying to be, about sort of trying to be that ripple that creates a wave of, of great change in the world. It really inspires me. It inspired me to get involved here in Stoughton. The people that, that I call my neighbors and my friends here in this town have, have been a great blessing to me. You know, there's also, there's also the great, I work in Boston and I live on Kinsley Street, and so I walk every day to the train station and take the train in, which is a tremendous thing. I'd much, much, much rather live in a community like Stoughton, with apologies to my friends who live in Boston, than to have my wonderful life here in Stoughton and take the train in and out of Boston every day than to live in Boston. Because I lived in Washington DC for seven years before I came here, had very much enough of living in the city and was really ready to be in a community again like this. And boy, did I find a place that I'm really proud to call home, so.
Very nice. And I think you have a little bit of poetry in you, a ripple that wants to become a wave.
That's Robert Kennedy, that's not me.
Jeez.
That's RFK. I can't claim.
Good. I'm saying, wow, that's pretty good, pretty, pretty high command.
That's right.
But that's a good segue to the sort of national scale. I thought we'd just weigh in a little about what you guys are seeing nationally for the country. I mean, these are times that, and I'm on record, by the way, saying, just so you'll be comfortable, that there is only one party. Okay? So, I disagree with everybody. So, I can disagree politely with you guys, but I don't believe there are two parties. I think there is one party and it has screwed up the country for a number of years. So, disagree with me. I have a normal discourse, a discourse that's, that is, I think, lacking. So, what do you think? What's going on nationally before? Because we have a few minutes to kind of see what Town Meeting reps here think of the world. So, tell me, Carmel.
Well, certainly...
And you can feel free to weigh out, by the way, and say, I don't want to touch that.
Oh, that's all right.
Okay.
I think division and not, you know, listening to other people and sort of a spirit of meanness is permeating our political culture. And I, I see that just spiraling and sort of like, well, you were mean to me, so now I'm going to be mean to you, and now that I have some power. When I didn't have power, you didn't treat me well, and now that I have power, I'm not going to treat you well. And just polarization and moving further and further apart. And I think that that's destructive. I think that that doesn't lead to good outcomes. I think that if we want to make decisions that are taking into account the, the needs of, of all the people, truly taking those into account, then we have to be willing to listen, we have to be willing to give up something that might be good for me, but, but if I hear that it's really not good for the rest of you, that I have to be willing to compromise and look at that. And I just don't see very much of that happening, certainly on a federal scale, but then also moving down into other governments. It's just sort of like hoarding power that, that people have and not being willing to listen, truly listen to the, the needs and voices of other people.
I think you mentioned you have daughters?
I have sons.
Sons.
Mm-hmm.
They're going to look back someday at this interview and say, that was my mom that said that. Now, you've got Reed, young Reed. Ten years from now, he looks back at this interview. Tell me what you think of the national, what's going on in the national right now.
Sure, sure. I read through a book a little while ago called, I think it's called Tribe by Sebastian Junger. I want to say I might be mispronouncing his name. But he, he talks about something that I think is really important to the way we understand politics right now. He talks about how, when, there's a difference between being nice to somebody and taking responsibility for somebody else, and they're well-billing.
Tell us about that difference. I'm not sure I understand that.
Well, you can just, you know, you just, when you're just kind of kind to somebody, it, there's no sort of familial link. You know, you maybe let somebody borrow a dollar, make them a sandwich or something like that. But when you take responsibility, when you actually take somebody under your wing and you say, I'm going to, I'm going to not just be nice to them, but I'm going to try and take care of them, I want to give them the things they need. And that, that is what it kind of means to be part of a tribe. And, and I think, I think something about that's very true, and there's definitely a light side of that where, where, you know, those kinds of bonds are very powerful and help everybody, you know, rise up. The problem is that when you are part of a tribe, anybody who's not part of that tribe becomes the other, right? And, and we start to, I don't want to overdo this, but dehumanize them to some degree and we kind of ignore them as, and their needs at the expense, so because they see those, those as being at the expense of our own, our tribe. And what I, what I worry is that, that, you know, we'll just simplify it and say, you know, Democrats and Republicans or Liberals and Conservatives are sort of peeling themselves away from each other into these tribes that are, that are, almost look more like sports teams, like who do you root for? And, and that's sort of pulling ourselves away from our communities. When you look at it at a national stage, it's, it's so sort of divorced from our regular interactions. All the figures we're seeing are people we'll probably never meet and, and they might as well be TV stars in a sense, you know? But when you meet people in your own community, I think that it brings you back to, you know, what, there's actually work that has to be done. This, this isn't theoretical, that when you're in like a town meeting, for example, or somehow involved in town government, that there's actual work that has to be done, there's compromises that have to be made. And they're real and they're important, and you need to be considerate of other people's needs because you're going to interact with them again. You can, it's easy to be nasty to somebody online because you may never see them and they might not know your name. But with your neighbor, you can't, you don't, you can't do that. You have to take care of them because they're right there and you see them, you know that, you know the problems they have, you know the things they're dealing with, and you need to help solve their problems.
That's a really well-stated point. And the idea of a tribe and the tension of not the tribe, tribe and not tribe...
Yeah.
...has to somehow be played out, right? I mean, it's got to be overcome because certain people are going to agree with you and be part of that. And I agree with what we're seeing, it's actually pulling friends apart. I mean, people who would otherwise, or have otherwise been friends, now find themselves at odds over political opinions, tribe and not tribe. What an interesting aspect of what's going on.
I think that's why, like, politics truly is a local phenomenon, that you, all politics is local, I forgot, I've now forgotten who said that. But I think that's very, very legitimate. Anything outside of what you can personally interact with is, is, you know, it's just not specific enough, it's not real enough in your own life. And so, I believe personally that the local politics are, to me, more important than the national politics. I want to make sure that our town is taken care of, I want to make sure that our people get the things they need. And I kind of don't, you know, I, I don't feel the same sort of influence over, over the national dialogue.
Very nicely put. Glenn, your thoughts nationally?
Yes. So, I think that one of the worst things that's happened in recent years is this incredible division among people, sort of like the tribal thing that Steve was saying, but the problems are, we can't have a conversation with somebody with whom we disagree without it turning very nasty and having it turn into a fight. And this is very, very destructive and we, you know, we see it echoed a lot online and particularly, there's this thing that people have written about recently called the echo chamber, which is that you end up hearing things back that are, that only reinforce my own, you know, beliefs about things, which is, then gets translated into, well, there's me and my beliefs and the people that agree with me, and then there's everybody else who have to be evil.
I feel that, by the way. Personally, I feel when I'm listening to people, I'm feeling not wanting to hear things that don't echo me. I'm actually feeling it.
Yes. No, it's a very real phenomenon and it's very destructive because it's, it inhibits conversations. You can't, you know, oftentimes people, we can't even agree on vocabulary, like what words actually mean, to have a meaningful, you know, discussion about things. I mean, that's the, the degree to which, that's how much trouble we're in. Like, we can't even agree that the, that the dictionary counts anymore oftentimes. And so, it, I think that's the, the real danger and the real problem that's going along, along nationally. I agree that, you know, what happens in Stoughton is far more important to me and my children and my family than what happens worldwide. Not that I don't care about that, not that it isn't important, but, you know, who my selectman is, is a lot more important and who my, my daughter's schoolteacher is and selectman is, is a lot more important, and who my daughter's schoolteacher is, and the pastor for our family. And all of these people have far more of an effect on my life and the life of my family than who is the president. And so that's why I agree, all politics is really very local. But I think that the one thing that we need to get over and sort of crush is this idea that we can't have conversations and have even spirited debates and discussions with people with whom we eventually disagree. I mean, that's how we grow, that's how we get, that's how we learn, that's how we progress, that's how things get better. And, you know, Adam did a really wonderful job at Town Meeting as an example of this kind of thing. There were groups of people who some might call obstructionist in things, others who always wanted to, you know, sort of, you know, corner the discussion on one little thing. It's like, yeah, I found it frustrating at times, but, you know, part of my responsibility as a person in, you know, as a Town Meeting rep and to have a discussion in that kind of a forum is that when I'm going to get up and say something, or I'm going to ask questions, you know, for me, I have to ask, "Is this going to contribute meaningfully to the discussion?" And if I believe yes, if it's something that I need to know, then I need to get up and ask my questions. But there are going to be plenty of other people in the room who won't agree that it's contributing meaningfully. But I still have to get up and ask, which means that I have to allow other people to get up and ask, even though it's somewhat tedious and, you know, we can, you know, roll, I can roll my eyes at them, I'm sure they roll their eyes at me, and that's fine as long as, at the end of the discussion, it's been respectful and we've been discussing ideas and not people and their personalities, which Adam did, you know, was very, you know, clear about, that this is not, you know, the latter is not going to be tolerated, you know, here.
Yeah.
And so I think that...
We need this, maybe you go national, right? This kind of a...
Yeah, we need to stop being afraid of things, of ideas that challenge our own because, you know, maybe I'll change my mind. That's not a bad thing.
Excellent, well put. You guys are geared up for another show about this sort of thing. You brought up such good points. But right now, I'm going to actually ask to go to our Public Service Announcements. So Gina, if you can pull up our Public Service Announcements. And I want to thank Jeff Pickett, Gina Ko, and Roy Cohen, who's running the cameras, Leo's out today. So in a minute, we'll jump right over to the Public Service Announcements. And here we are.
Maxi's Delicatessen, that's at 117 Sharon Street in Stoughton. They're 781-341-1662. American Cancer Society, yes, they're looking for volunteers, drive cancer patients to and from their treatments. Or just go to www.cancer.org. Ilse Mark's Food Pantry in St. Anthony's Free Market, Two Park Avenue in Stoughton. For more information, call Christine Gallagher, that's at 781-341-0611, or 781-341-0549. Meals on Wheels, just ask for Jessica, you'll find her at 781-344-8882, extension two. Stoughton Penny Saver, our business is advertising your business, they tell us. 27 Rose Glen Street, Stoughton, 781-344-4833. Community Forum Showtimes in Stoughton, it's Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday at 6:00 PM. Monday at 8:00 PM, Tuesday at 5:00 PM. It's on Comcast, Channel 9, and Verizon, Channel 28. All comments and suggestions welcome, contact us at communityforum1@yahoo.com. Samaritans, they're at 41 West Street on the fourth floor in Boston, 02111. Their phone number is 617-536-2460. 24-hour helplines for Samaritans, and the number is 877-870-HOPE. That's 877-870-4673. Samaritines, you can find them at 800-252-TEEN. That's 252-8336. Or find them online at samaritanshope.org.
And we've also got a couple of other announcements. We have Monday Night Bingo from our friends at Havik Torah Congregation, wonderful congregation over at 1179 Central Street here in Stoughton. Doors open for Monday Night Bingo at 4:30, the games start at 6:30. I understand they're going to have two big pots, so a little extra things in the kitty today. So let's get over there on Monday and have fun, join right in on the Monday Night Bingo. And we're back here with our guests, new Town Meeting members, and Adam. So Adam is the new Town Moderator. Kick off the last, we have just a few minutes, maybe you want to just share some final thoughts with the viewers.
I just got to say how inspired I've been by our new Town Meeting members. Just the other night, I met for, I met over at Avocado's with Carmel and with a former Town Meeting and hopefully soon again Town Meeting member, Daniel Collings, to talk about how it is we encourage more of a diverse, the diversity of Stoughton back in our Town Meeting again, that it's more representative, that the group of people who represent the town really does represent the town and all of our wonderful diversity here. Steve, who has, who started out his campaign by going, literally going and knocking on doors up and down his, up and down Ewing Drive and around Precinct 1, trying to hear what it is that they care about and how he can best represent those people. Glenn here, who does the same thing in Precinct 8, and has been so very careful, careful about, not only about our Town Meeting process, but also about listening to people and trying to be a very good representative of people. That's what we need in this town. We need people like this who are so interested in making Stoughton a better place, and I'm very grateful that we have a process in which they can dive in and make their voices heard. So that's why I love Town Meeting, and that's why I'm really, really happy to be in this role. So it's been a wonderful experience so far, it really has.
Now, you're the moderator?
That's right.
But I really, it's a moderated view from these guys. They're really like thinking it through and not trying to be so strong that they sort of ignore other views.
Yeah.
So Glenn, final thoughts?
Final thought would be, get involved one way or another. If you care about what's happening in Stoughton, there is a place for you to participate in the outcome of what happens. If it's not Town Meeting, you can always, you know, come to the committee meetings and give input. You know, you can come to Town Meeting and just watch it and learn what happens. There's always something that you can do, participate.
Very good. Steve?
Yeah, get involved. Please, if you've ever thought about running for Town Meeting, run. There are seats, the work is very important, we definitely need you. And if you call the town clerk, excellent, excellent town clerk, she will hold your hand from the beginning to the end happily. So we have all the resources, and if you want to do it, you can definitely do it. Please do.
Great job. Carmel?
Well, I of course also think it's important to get involved, and then the flip side of that is for the people who are involved, whether it's in Town Meeting or your kid's school PTA or other groups in the neighborhood, the New Keep-Stoughton-Beautifull Group, any of these things, for the people who are involved to really notice and pay attention to who's not involved and to make sure that those people feel invited and feel welcomed and have the things that they need in order to be a part of it. Because it can be very easy to, I mean, I get involved in things all the time. So it can be very easy for me to say, "Well, of course, anyone could do this," and it's important for me to also step back and say, "What are the reasons that people might not?" Because they don't have the information, because they don't know that they could be involved, or because they don't feel welcome in a group, so to...
And you want to make sure they do feel welcome.
Absolutely.
All right. Well, I want to thank our audience, thanks very much. My name's Steve Kelly, I'm the host. This is Community Forum, and I want to thank our wonderful guests and you for viewing. Thanks very much.